Roll call vote please.
Percy.
Here.
Kirby Hall.
Here.
Van Dyne.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Kerwin.
Here.
Larry Hall. Tudor.
Here.
Stuter.
Yes.
We have a quorum.
Uh, let's see, from all the minutes for the council tonight, we've got several for March 17th, our regular city council meeting, March 25th, our special city council in April 1st. Uh, a brief meaning to this special city council meeting. Or you can do that all in one motion, guys.
No, just two.
Mr. Mayor, I'd rather move.
Please move.
Just the two of you.
All right, I, uh, to approve the minutes as written, March 17th, March 25th, and April 1st, 2015.
My motion by Alderman Kirby Hall is your second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Tudor.
Yes.
Van Dyne.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Stuter.
Pass.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. All right, mayor's report, got a few things going on tonight, and I'm gonna swing around the front here. We've got some officers, we're gonna be smart here. All right, the first one up, or probably mispronounced his name, but we're gonna try anyway. Uh, Daniel Szczesinski, they get it? Awesome. All right, just a brief bio on Officer Szczesinski, graduated from Julia Catholic Academy in 2008, listed in the United States Marine Corps the following year, still a current marine. Well, that would be a marine, correct?
That's right.
Spent four years in acting duty, remains a civilian reservist. Uh, completed two years of college at every red-along, aeronautical university before being hired down to Wilmington. Uh, graduated the suburban law academy, December 19th, 2014, he is married to Jennifer. Is there? Oh, there she is. And has one daughter, and wife is currently expecting a second child. Congratulations. All right, Daniel, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
My name is Szczesinski. Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge duties of police officer.
And I'll faithfully discharge duties of police officer.
For the city of Wilmington according to the best of my ability.
The city of Wilmington according to the best of my ability.
Yep. Thank you, Daniel. All right, the next one we have, we have a lot of bio on him. Uh, Greg Egbert, part-time officer. He's interested in law enforcement, began at an early age, became police cadet, radio operator for Glenwood Police Department in 1976. Goodness, that's going grade school. It's a humor somewhere. He's hired a full-time officer in Glenwood, uh, 1978, graduated from the Police Training Institute at the University of Illinois that same year. Uh, he left full-time police department and started a career with UPS in 1984. Uh, he continued as a part-time officer with Glendale until, uh, or Glenwood, I'm sorry, until 2007. A UPS who served as a fleet manager, uh, he was promoted, well, yeah, he was promoted to fleet, I'm gonna screw this up. He's got a lot on here. But he worked for UPS for several years, despite his full-time responsibilities to UPS, Greg did manage to start the Glenwood Police Department's Motorcycle Unit and became commander in charge of part-time operations. He accepted the position as a part-time officer at Thornton, Illinois in 2008, and was named Police Officer of the Year for 2013, congratulations. And in December of 2014, Greg left Thornton to come to Wilmington. Greg has been married to his wife Melanie for 36 years. She made the claim.
She's very ill.
Okay, well, wish her the best. And they have two children, uh, daughter Rachel and son Matthew, who is a homeless police officer. Raise your right hand, repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Gregory Egbert.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge duties of police officer.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
For the city of Wilmington according to the best of my will.
For the, for the city of Wilmington accor- to the best of my ability.
You know you don't stand a chance after that, Greg.
All right, now we get into some much easier names, musical names. All right, Brian Adams. Brian here. Awesome. Uh, Brian Adams is a lifelong resident of Wilmington, and is youngest son of Robert Sandy Adams. Graduated Wilmington High School in 2003. He gained his career in criminal justice in 2009 when he became a deputy correctional officer for the Wolf County Sheriff's Department. While working for the Wolf County Sheriff's Department, Officer Adams attended JJC, and graduated with honors in 2014, earning a degree in criminal justice. Officer Adams graduated from the Illinois State Police Academy on April 2nd, received the top marksman award after achieving a perfect score on the firearms qualification course, and Officer Adams has two older brothers, one of whom is a former correctional officer and a current police officer. Chief to Alex Hill. I get it wrong at this point. All right, sir, if you raise your hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Brian Adams.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer.
For the city of Wilmington.
For the city of Wilmington.
According to the best of my will.
According to the best of my will.
All right, last, but certainly not least, uh, Mr. Richard Santana. There he is. Mr. Officer Santana attended Western Illinois University, studying forensic chemistry and law enforcement. He has worked in a variety of security positions protecting industrial facilities, laboratories, banks, and his last assignment is a high school, school security officer in Skokie, Illinois. In October 2012, Richard was accepted to the Auxiliary Police Officer Program with the Schiller Park Police Department. After becoming a part-time officer, he served under bike control and community service units, and has graduated the Northeast Multi-Regional Training Part-Time Police Academy in 2014. All right. Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, state your name.
I, Richard Santana.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
I'll faithfully discharge the duties.
Of police officer for the city of Wilmington.
Of police officer for the city of Wilmington.
According to the best of my will.
According to the best of my will.
All right, again, to all the four guys, uh, welcome aboard. Um, it's certainly nice to see, I know we got three full-timers, one part-timer. I know the process was difficult to get, get to this point, but we're glad to have you. We look forward to seeing you on the street, doing what you're supposed to do, and that's protecting the serving, serving community. The citizens of Wilmington, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
I'd also like to recognize, uh, Mr. Jester.
Yeah.
Uh, he's out there. I need to inform Mr. Jester that in a future time, we'll be honoring him in his retirement, uh, there shortly, so.
Retirement?
Yes. Not really, but kind of, so.
Retiring.
But Rick, thank, it's nice to see you out there. Thank you. All right. All right, a few other things under the mayor's report tonight. Uh, the second item up is a resolution. Uh, it's a resolution asserting the prevailing weight rate of wages for the city of Wilmington. Uh, just per info before that, motion's passed. It's a standard form that's required by Illinois under the state statutes, we have to pass this resolution every year, correct, Tony?
Yes. So. I've got that, mayor. I move to approve Resolution 2015-03, a resolution asserting the prevailing rate of wages for the city of Wilmington.
My motion by Alderman Percy, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Tudor, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Percy.
Yeah.
Tudor.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Van Dyne.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Stuter.
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Thank you. Um, next on the mayor's report, I just did inform everybody that Kobe Zemidis, our city engineer, has just currently completed all the requirements and is now a certified flooding manager. It's a big deal for us when we're handling contractual issues and stuff like that, so.
And construction issues. Centered resin was the one that was able to bring that class to this area.
To the yard.
All right, thank you. Waste management, yard waste collection began April 2nd, so you guys can put your bags of leaves out there and any other, uh, material that goes in the brown bags from now until November 27th. Um, spring leaf back pickup, we will have designated dates of bank for it from May 15th, um, where our city crew will go out with the leaf back to pick up any leaves that may be about during those, that two-week period. Um, the waste, uh, management citywide cleanup is scheduled for May 14th. KKT Shrine Club will be doing their onion sale on May 9th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the City Hall parking lot. And, uh, also to make note, uh, the Downtown Merchants Association, uh, they did have their inaugural flea market last Saturday, the port, um, which was very well represented, I happened to be out there, so a lot of people out there, and they had a lot of, a lot of antique stuff and a lot of good stuff, so it was good, good to have them out there. Um, to also let you know there will be additional dates, um, on the Sat- first Saturday every month for June, July, August, September, and October. Uh, the United States NRC, which is the Nuclear Regulatory Commission, will have a public meeting April 21st at the Godley Park District. And lastly, uh, just so everybody knows, uh, there will be a request for a special city council meeting, I think we're still on track for that, at 6:00 p.m. on, uh, next Tuesday, April 14th, so everybody can mark that calendar as regards to Ridgeport's final plan approval for the CDC decision.
Oh, we canceled the other meeting.
I was gonna ask you about the other meeting.
Um, yeah, what we'll do is we'll, uh, take a look at the agendas and how those agendas are. Um, I believe we've got police and, and ordinance. If, if necessary that we need to have meetings with those two, then we may structure them on another day during that week. We'll just see how the agendas, uh, file up. If there's not, then we'll just, uh, uh, nothing really pressing, then we'll just have, forego that meeting for this month, do it next. We'll talk with the department heads. All right? And, uh, I don't want to run here, but I know if you recognize, we have a few people out there from 2:40. Uh, raise your hand, guys, if you don't want to, if you don't mind recognizing. A couple of weeks ago, I don't know, a lot of people come into, uh, yeah, there must be today, there you go. A couple of weeks ago, uh, on Sunday, I happened to be, uh, out there just up by me, but, uh, the entrance to KKT Street, the New River Road was, uh, quite, um, filled with trash, uh, along the roadway. And not only the Boy Scouts, but their parents as well took the time out on a Sunday morning, uh, spent a few hours out there and, uh, cleaned it up, and it was tremendous work there. People that actually noticed and recognized what you've done, um, and told me at the same time. So I wanted to make sure I gave you guys special recognition to realize that what you guys did did not go unnoticed. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next item up is citizens' comments. If anybody has any citizen's comments tonight, would you just please ask that you state your name, uh, to the city clerk prior to, uh, speaking, so the city clerk can get that. If you have a long, unusual name, which sometimes happens, please, uh, spell it out for our city clerks, so you can get that right for the minute. Any citizens' comments? Start with Sherry.
Minnie Menoso. Sherry Michaels. I just wanna say I was out there walking Water Street Saturday, and it was really nice, and something that was really nice to see. I saw Officer Donald Thomas and Officer Szczesinski walking around, talking to the kids, and really interacting with them, and talking about their jobs, and asking the kids what they like to do, and we just get such a bad rap nowadays, and every damn truly blessed for the people we have serving us.
Thank you, Sharon. All right, anybody else for citizen's comments? Mr. Doug?
Hello, my name's David Doug. I'm the general manager of Freight Trans Trucking, we're located around 53 and the River Road. I came here tonight to discuss the Illiana tollway. I have two reasons to reject the construction on this road. The first being, it will destroy our property. A property which personally took me eight years to find, annex, zone, and develop. Secondly, the tollway is slated to be built with private funds, to be prepaid, repaid by the tolls. All shortfalls are guaranteed by the state. A state that has no money. The projected cost of the construction is $1.3 billion. That equates to $100 for every woman, man, and child in the state of Illinois. Proponents plan for truckers to pay the bulk of the cost. They fail to realize that truckers will not use a road that costs $37 when there are free and low-cost alternatives. I have with me, and I passed out to the older people, and I left a couple of copies up here on the desk, a letter, an article from the Chicago, uh, cream Chicago Business, outlining a secret inquiry made by IDOT last year to a bond rating organization. Fitch Ratings reportedly gave a negative oral report to IDOT. The financing of the Illiana will not work. We're all waiting for the decision by Governor Riner concerning the tollway. Please join with me and thousands of your fellow neighbors to voice to any and all public officials a no vote for this wasteful bundago on a road to nowhere.
Thank you. All right, any other citizens' comments tonight?
I have something to say. Stephanie Rose, um, I'm one of the mothers of the Boy Scouts, and I just wanna make a comment about how horrible the trash really is. We've actually been doing this with the Cub Scouts and the Boy Scouts for several years now, and even after we cleaned up KKT Street, somebody dumped two bags of garbage down there this past week, and it's really distressing to us just to see how much garbage is around, so I urge you to talk to people and make sure that people are keeping their garbage picked up.
And I could agree with you more. All right, um, any more citizens' comments? Don't have anything there. All right, planning and zoning commission, uh, their next scheduled meeting is Thursday, 2015, uh, 6:00 p.m. They do have an agenda. Uh, community reports, building grounds, parks health and safety, Alderman Percy, Alderman Van Dyne.
Mr. Mayor, the next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, April 15th, 2015, at 6:30 p.m.
Uh, Water Sewer Streets Analysis Committee, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Kerwin.
Mr. Mayor, next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, April 15th, 2015, at 5:30 p.m.
Uh, Police and Essta, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Tudor.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, April 14th, at 5:30 p.m.
Tentative.
Tentative.
There we go.
Scheduled for.
All right, uh, the big one, uh, Finance Administration of Land Act, Alderman Stuter, Alderman Tudor.
Got them all.
I move to approve the April 8th, 2015 accounts payable in the amount of $411,920.62.
My motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second, yeah.
Second by Alderman Percy. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Tudor.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Van Dyne.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Stuter.
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Thank you.
I move to approve to waive competitive bidding for state statutes for Breiser Construction Company contract.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Evans. Just clarification to the attorney that's holding a two-thirds vote, just in particular, okay?
Right.
So, any waiving, ready bidding is required with two-thirds vote, so. Um, any discussion?
What is this dealing with?
This is a deal with the, uh, the contract in regards to the state.
That's the one that you guys had last week?
Yeah.
Yes. No, this, this is actually the next step.
Right.
Last week was the settlement with Wood in Wisconsin. And now we have the funds allocated to, for us to get people to work. Now we're looking to hire contractors.
You get the word, though?
We get the word, God. So, we received, um, proposals from the local contractors, and Breiser's the, uh, the first one that we, I think at six, six to eight. And other state statutes, uh, since we're not going out to, uh, competitive bidding, we're asking to waive the competitive bidding, so we can keep this project moving forward in that building, right, Joe?
Okay, so.
Got you, thank you.
Any further discussion? Mr. Mayor, I would just like, um, to let council know, council know again that, um, I will be voting no for all these, I don't believe in the, the waiving of the competitive bidding for these contractors, so.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm going to abstain from voting because I am an employee of Breiser Construction, but what I will say is that, um, the city would spend considerable amount of money if they had to re-engineer, um, this project and to, uh, to redevelop the scope of work, and they'd certainly spend a lot more than they would, um, um, spend by just hiring a contractor who's already walked through the, uh, job, with the previous general contractor. I understand your concern very well, Joe, but if, um, um, I, I would be very concerned that if we were hired of a, of an engineering firm to come in and rewrite a bid, uh, package and scope, and then wait for competitive bidding, that we would not only delay the job, we would spend any savings from a, a, a better bid, um, on engineering and, um, and design.
Understood.
And the only other thing is, uh, I know we're not in the contract phase. Um, on this contract, we are looking to do a not-to-exceed, and it's type of material. So what we're walking through, if the bid does go through, we'll be walking through it, we'll be watching over, so we do know what the dollar amount's gonna be at any date, and we anticipate them to be less because there's, uh, there's some work there that we could probably, uh, with very minimal type of work, can be completed. We're not having to tear, tear things down and replace.
I just really want to get our guys, they're back there.
Yes.
All right, any, uh, further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Tudor.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Van Dyne.
No.
Stuter.
Abstain.
Motion passed.
I move to approve the Breiser Construction Company contract for carpentry, punch lists, drywall, and painting punch list and rework of ceilings for services performed at the new police facility in the amount not to exceed $297,250.
My motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second? Second. Second by Alderman Kerwin, any discussion? Thank you, Tony kinda highlighted the time of materials, and we'll be going through that. Um, we anticipate utilizing, uh, our city engineer to kinda oversee a lot of the stuff that's going on.
Actually, what we're gonna, uh, yes, Kobe's gonna help out, because he was the one that filed in the occupation of, of punch lists for the inspections. But also with, um, Officer Egbert, Egbert, with all his experience, uh, I think he's gonna offer some assistance with the chief to, uh, to help oversee this too, and that, so. We're gonna have a couple of eyes, uh, in, in ears watching, watching over the contract.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call vote please.
Tudor.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Van Dyne.
No.
Evans.
Yes.
Stuter. Motion passed.
I move to approve to waive competitive bidding for local ordinance for the funding electric contract.
My motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin. All right, any discussion on this? Roll call vote please.
Tudor.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Van Dyne.
No.
Evans.
Yes.
Stuter.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I move to approve to plan an electric contract for the electrical work punch list for services performed at the new police facility in the amount not to exceed $13,750.
My motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Alderman Evans, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Tudor.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Stuter.
Yes.
Van Dyne.
No.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
All yes, motion passed.
Thank you.
I move to approve to waive competitive bidding for local ordinance for the CES Incorporated contracts.
My motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second? Second by Alderman Kirby Hall, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I believe, uh, city clerk said it was all yes on the last vote.
Oh, sorry. Seven yes, one no, motion passed.
Okay. That's all, that's fine. Uh, okay, my motion, we have a second.
You did Kirby Hall.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Kirby got it.
Any, any discussion in regards to the CES waiver? I got that good. Roll call vote please.
Tudor.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Van Dyne.
No.
Evans.
Yes.
Stuter.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I move to approve the CES Incorporated contract for security camera and access control punch lists for services performed at the new police facility in the amount not to exceed $8,876.
My motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Percy, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Tudor.
Yes.
Percy.
Yes.
Kerwin.
Yes.
Larry Hall.
Yes.
Kirby Hall.
Yes.
Van Dyne.
No.
Evans.
Yes.
Stuter.
Yes.
Motion passed.
I move to approve the CES Incorporated contract for detention cell and booking area redesign services at the new police facility in the amount not to exceed $18,984.
My motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second? Second. Second by Alderman Kerwin, any discussion?
Hey, I noticed that, uh, those two have different prices on this. Because the first one that we just did was $8,876.
That was for the camera.
Yeah, I know, but if you look at this list, it's showing $18,000. There's, there's two, Larry.
There's two.
You're doing cameras and access control, the one you just read was booking area. Yeah, the, the first one was the booking area for $8,876.
Yeah, it says here, the contract for security camera and access control punch lists at $88.76, and the current one is for the detention cell and booking area redesign, $18,984.
Uh, I see where Larry's going.
Where you went.
The, um, they're flipped on, on the motions.
Oh, yep. They sure are.
I mean, the, the, the amounts, CES amounts are correct, but the, uh, type, scope of work is different. Yeah. That's what you're talking about.
So do I need to rescind and correct? I would say so.
We brought out a scope of work for $8,876, which shows $18,984.
I would think we should be able to move to a net that would increase the price.
So we should go, motion go, um, main, uh, first motion?
Let's, uh, how about we do this, boy? Let's, how about we do this? Under the detention cell booking area, which is the one we're under right now, Alderman Tudor and Kirby, all rescind your motions and second on that for right now.
I will rescind my motion on the contract for CES for the detention cell and booking area redesign in the amount of $18,984.
Rescind that one, and then, that one's for actually $8,000.
That one's for $8,000.
You can reapply that motion for $8,000.
Yeah.
Okay? Just change that number to $8,000. When we get through all these, we'll come back to the security camera and then...
I second.
Motion to reflect the $8,000.
Okay. Okay, so, now I'll make my motion?
Yeah, under the, for the booking area for the $8,000.
Okay. I move to approve the CES Incorporated contract for detention cell and booking area redesign services at the new police facility in the amount not to exceed $8,876.
Motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
I move to approve to waive competitive bidding for local ordinance for the Wilmington overhead doors contract.
A motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kerwin. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I move to approve the Wilmington overhead doors contract for services performed and materials provided at, sorry, at the new police facility in the amount not to exceed $7,700.
A motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Persick. Any discussion?
He said $7,770, right?
No.
Yeah, it should be $70,000.
All right. $7,770.
There you go. Thank you. All right. Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I move to approve to waive competitive bidding for per local ordinance for national security and window filming.
A motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Alderman Evans. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
No.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
I move to approve the proposal submitted by National Security and Window Filming for services provided at the new police facility in the amount not to exceed $5,116.
A motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Kirby Hall. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Now we just need the amended motion on the security camera for CES, correct?
Can we rescind this first?
No, you can. The amended, well, variety, the first motion.
We just moved to...
Amend the motion, amend, approve the CES...
I move to amend the approved
Motion.
Motion for CES Incorporated contract for security camera and access control punch list for services provided at the new police facility in the amount not to exceed $18,984.
A motion by Alderman Tudor, do we have a second?
I second.
Second by Alderman Larry Hall. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Tudor?
Yes.
Larry Hall?
Yes.
Persick?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
Kirby Hall?
Yes.
Van Dyne?
No.
Evans?
Yes.
Studer?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, April 21st, at 6:00 PM.
Just real quickly, I know this has been long about talking to the police facility, and it's been, one thing I want to say to Alderman is to thank you for your patience in going through all this. This has been a challenge for not only staff, myself especially, and everybody in trying to get this police station up and running. We're at a point now that unfortunately, we dealt with issues by the contractor, William Scottson, that did meet the expectations that we were looking for as a city of what we wanted our police station to be. We're at that point now where we basically, we're going to make sure that, I want to say June 1st, we're in there, but I've been saying so many dates, we're going to be in there, I'm not going to say anything. I'm hoping for June 1st. No, truthfully, we want to get you guys in there. It's been long overdue for the police station, and for new police stations, been needed for the city of Wilmington, and, you know, we'll get this thing done, we'll get it done right, and we'll have a nice police station for many years to come. Thank you. Next, maybe, ordinance license. Do you have?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm starting reading ordinance admitting and delaying certain provisions of Chapter 71, license provisions, and relating in an entirety article to food deliveries of Chapter 115 of the City of Wilmington, Corvus. Starting reading ordinance admitting Chapter 39, purchasing and contracts, and the next scheduled meeting is Tuesday, April 20, 2015, at 6:00 PM. Personnel collecting bargaining, Alderman Hall, Alderman Persick, and Alderman, we don't have a technical section.
If you have nothing, I suppose.
City administration board, Mr. Grab.
Now, we see the request to renovate and repair the Memorial Park gazebo, home organization in town, Lions Club.
And the women's auxiliary.
And a women's auxiliary. So, I just want to give everybody a notice on that. You'll be seeing volunteers out there working. We do have a simple agreement where they sign, they waive, you know, any liability to us, or hold us harmless. So, we're working on the gazebo and out there and getting it ready for basically for the memorial.
Is that the BMW auxiliary? Yes. Lady, the bank and...
I think that'll work, that'll work well. Get some volunteers to come down.
Yeah, if you want any help, let me know.
Definitely, everyone's helped. Good thing. We did send out everybody via email. We did have the bid opening today for the lawn maintenance and mowing of the grass for all our parks, and we do have one little bidder that we're going to be interviewing on Friday, and we bring in their certificates of insurance and references. That little bidder was $20,300. So, we're quite, we're doing the rebid and then re-aligning some of the work out there with the contractors. I think it, a little bit of weight probably definitely benefited us in the long run for this project. So, contractor out of Lennox called H.L. and Associates, so we'll be reviewing that. We'll be coming to the, oh, building grounds, building ground, to review bids. Everybody was here, and they had their bid sheets when they left, and they wanted a copy of the bids, they got a copy of the bid, so I think everything went well this time, and so we're in good shape for that to work. The only entertainment we're going to be working on is, I mean, as projects keep coming in, we all know about the bridge, it's going to start at 17. Everything seemed to be right in order for the start. The AMAC's got everything up now on the lights, they'll be testing them, and we'll see traffic, you know, delays or anything. We are looking at trying to do some notices so that if they want to check the website, if we know anything specific, we'll put a press release, and then be able to let the public know if they want updates after there's anything that changed. They're going to go to our website, and Kobe will be getting pre-construction notices for the week, if there's going to be anything unique going on out there while we're working on that, on that bridge. The other projects, Route 53, the IP loan documents should be showing up in the day now, from what I understand, and we're going to give the OK for Austin Tower, start that project for the, for the water main and Route 53. Water main, it did break there at First Street, and what is Row, or First Street and 53. Gary will be getting out there to clean all that up, because we had some businesses ask where to do patch work on that gravel that's out in the middle of 53 there, and we'll get that completed and clean up the parkway from that project. That project was kind of an eye-opener again, that eight-h mane that's coming under the road was not encased, so we're anticipating that we're going to have to address that, you know, in the future. We're going to probably do a bore and probably put a casing under the road if we're going to do anything with that eight-h mane. But that's all going to be, as we're discussing things with the, with the well and backup for our water plant, for that eight-h mane to be primary service only for our water plant to get the water, because right now we do get services off there. So, that'll be a project we'll probably be looking at the next year to where we could turn that eight-h mane to a direct feed only into our system, and I think that'll be a good thing, but we'll have to look at seeing what that cost is going to be. The work that was done, we did bring ice again to help on that project, because, you know, it was kind of deep to get in there and made kind of trenches in Route 53. Crew didn't have the job, you know, done in one day. We didn't notify all the businesses beforehand and try to keep traffic open, so businesses were not interrupted, but that project went out to work that bit. Route 53 in Peatown, we're working to our, we'll get the bids out in June. I think that's going to be doable, talking to IDOT and everything, when we get the bids out sooner for that. We are running into a problem with our Arsenal Road project. We're finding out that we got some utilities out there with Nycor now that's going to have to get relocated, so dealing with Nycor could put a delay in that project. Some pretty project has to be delayed. That one probably is okay because we got the temporary lights up, so I think that was a good choice for us to put temporary lights up, so we wouldn't have to worry about trying to rush that project through as we're trying to keep the cost down, and of course, that project is funded through the state, and that money is there in the trust fund for us to keep going on both those projects. State's not going to delay us on funding those projects, we were told by the economic development program down in D.C.O. So, is there any updates right now?
One or two still going, too, right?
Oh, yes. Yes, one or two. We've had some challenges working with the contractor on that, but we did notify our senator about some of the work. As you notice, there's a lot of piece work being done instead of taking out the whole curve. We tried to get some extra funding for, be able to do a project we believe should have been done the right way, but IDOT said they were short-funded and money was not available to do it, so they had to take the best, the worst, do with the worst, and had to deliver what we got, what we were told. Very disappointing. Center of Res was notified of it, and we'll probably be able to follow a meeting with District One and find out, second time this has happened to us, over again, projects coming here where IDOT comes in and designs something, don't have enough funds to complete the work, to our, just basic standards. So, at one or two, whatever road closure there, it'll always be two lanes open, there will be some slowdown in traffic. And then Dollar General, what we're waiting for right now is tomorrow night, we got the site plan review one more time with the planning commission, and then we'll be able to start the footings, and then we'll be having a vote, we'll come to city council to approve the final site plan for Dollar General. So, that project is delayed a little bit for a day or two, but they're all ready to go.
Is Ridgeport still, has beaten all their obligations for the CDCs that were purchased and set on the next Tuesday, or do they still got some?
CDC's all set. Yeah, the 15th is when they want to close them, they're on the contracts, and they need to have the final, final plan approved for that Breiser unit, so we need to have that special meeting so they can close and keep things moving. The building permits are ready to go. They're paying their fees, it is full district, the library, the park district, and fire district. So, as soon as those fees are paid, the permits will be, will be issued. We did issue the footing permits for Building B because they need to get things started on that, and it's all ready to go. I did notify all the, all the other agencies that their, you know, the fees are underway. We did issue a footing permit, going to start the footings, since we had good weather. Actually, we're pouring out there on Saturday, the northeast, with the footings. So, we're, we're going to be looking at scheduling groundbreaking for both those facilities for that to happen, and probably be in about three or four weeks in Ridgeport. We did, had a good conversation with Petro today, they got all the bids in, they're going through their bids, they're anticipating to start construction probably the third week in May, so I think we're going to be seeing the, on traffic and a lot of construction work out there in Ridgeport. Everything's looking good. I was thinking of the temporary batch plan is getting ready to fire up again, and you'll probably be seeing a plan in here for turn that site into a permanent batch, a permanent concrete plan, probably in the next four to six weeks.
Tony, do you have any information on whether they're going to open up the new road and close the existing bridge?
Oh, Ridgeway, Ridgeway is what Frank's talking about, which is on the east side of the Michelin project. We're hoping to be able to open that up probably in about six, eight weeks. We're discussing with the frontage road with IDOT. I think we're going to have a little bit of a delay there to where the transfer is going to happen, but Petro's project, site plan operates with the frontage road still being there, and then ultimately, they'll close that road. We're anticipating closing that frontage road and building the rest of Ridgeway out to the frontage. It probably will be either late fall project or it'll be spring. So, frontage road will stay open until these...
It's not going to affect their construction plan?
No, they, we worked around that, so they'll be in good shape, so...
So, they'll, they'll end up taking that out and become part of their landscaping then or something?
Yeah, that's basically, it's, what we did was, we allowed that to be the buffer when the site plan gets done, it went through planning commission under that site plan review, and everybody was okay with that, so. So, yeah, good question on that. We don't want to slow Petro down.
Thanks, Tony. Attorney's report, Mr. Urban.
Thank you. Since the last regular meeting, I've been involved in a couple of matters related to the new police facility. Also, I've been involved with the benefit of Peatown Road, Route 53 road improvement, and also I've made some minor changes to proposed sign ordinance, which will be before the planning zone commission of Ruth Larno.
Thank you, Mr. Urban. All right. Need a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second. Attorney's favor. Your adjourn.